Call of order, the meeting of the council of the town of Washington on March 13th, 2023. First, I'm going to make a motion to amend the agenda and then approve agenda. I'd like to add a new item A, boundary line adjustment, discussion of boundary line adjustment agreement.
Under old business?
Yeah, under old business, yeah. Yes. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Oh, you don't have one?
What's that?
We're sharing.
Oh. Here, I'll give you this one.
That's yours, that's the mayor's.
All right, got that all done. I'm going to dispense with the mayor's report tonight, just because I'm going to end up talking quite a bit during two of our other items that are on the agenda.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
That's fine.
So, I think it's over.
Nothing this month. I mean, I could rattle on about how much money we've been spending. You're going to do that, so.
A little.
A little bit. Nothing. Watch out for next month, though. That's my, that's my month.
Well, and tonight's conversation is really, I guess, really about, we're going to have a budget framing discussion on Saturday. Start off the budget discussion for the next fiscal year, and we wanted a chance to talk about some items tonight that will help us frame that discussion on Saturday. Not that I didn't think all of you would want to come on Saturday.
You're welcome to.
You're welcome.
Is it a budget work session?
Yes.
Yes, it is, yeah.
Ten to twelve. Here. Come be excited.
Bring your abacus.
Last time was by Zoom, and I was really great.
Sorry.
No Zoom this year.
Thank you, Mayor. Two items to report on tonight. One is that I have prepared a form easement deed for your utility system to use, complete with instructions, run it by Ms. Mattson, we're good to go with that. So if you do have some occasion to have somebody who needs to dedicate a deed for an easement, dedicate an easement for water or sewer service across their property, that document is written and ready to go. Secondly, the trail license between the town and the county is, I believe, ready for execution. I think we've reached agreement on all of the details. We went back and forth a little bit on the plat. The plat shows the property, that shows the trail and the approximate location where it'll end up being, subject to field engineering. And we had to go back and forth a little bit on that because of some issues with the topography and then with where it was in relation to the trees. So I think that's all squared away in shipshape. And I'm ready to answer any questions you may have.
So this is the one that would go from the number of the town to the post office?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay.
Well, across the town, across the county part of that, that segment, yes.
Zoning commission?
I'm also not bad.
They're planning, rather.
On the same day as the town council in February, and we reported that, so we pushed the meeting early. So our next meeting is the end of this month. So I want to.
And my apologies, I was reading more.
I just don't want to get, I don't want to find I got zoned.
You sort of. Anything from the ARB?
Really quickly, Drew Mitchell, ARB. Not ARB chair, Drew Mitchell, ARB. I'm not the chairman, that was the first order of business. We, every year we elect new officers and we rotate so we can share the load and whatnot. So Deb Harris will be the chair starting last meeting, so I'm giving the report in her stead. We only had one application, and that was from the Rush River Commons regarding the lighting, and it was approved. It was great because it was all very dark skies sensitive, and that was the bulk of our conversation. A lot of people came in from the audience and, the community, excuse me. And it was a, it was great, great conversation, and the Rush River Commons folks were, were very sensitive and actually enthusiastic about the lighting that they had come up with, so it wouldn't impact the dark skies, which is right across the street. So, yeah, it was a good meeting overall, but thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, right along to old business, boundary line adjustment.
Works.
No, that was the one that I do as part of the, as part of the outside, yeah. I'm like pointing out, hey, we do need to approve the minutes from last meeting, so.
I feel.
All seven?
Yes.
Any discussion?
No.
We're very, very on top of it tonight.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, now, under old business. I had prepared some remarks about how we got here with the BLA tonight, but I'm not going to promote more folks with that. I think it was Gates who said a waste of correctional years behind. Certainly a waste of breath, the many months of weeks we spent on this to recount all that. So I am going to propose, as I think everybody knows, at the last board supervisors meeting, the board came to us or asked that we do more to sort of make it very clear that we're not, make the prohibitions on the building of residential dwellings on the parcel we're considering moving in more stringent. No, I, I think that we had done a lot of work to prepare that, worked very closely with the planning commission to make some steps with it. I think in the spirit of compromise, that we could do a little bit more, so. In front of you is a copy of, of the BLA with a highlighted section that I would propose that we insert, and then we'll open up some discussion, but we would insert a new, in Article One, it would be a new paragraph three, the title of which would be limitation on use, and it would read as follows, for folks in the audience who may not have a copy. Pursuant to the resolution adopted by the town of Washington on February 13th, 2023, this parcel shall be zoned village commercial, which does not allow for residential construction. The town will not consider nor approve any rezoning, special use permit, or other legislative action which would allow for residential construction on this parcel without the concurrence of the county board supervisors while this agreement remains in effect. That would be my proposed amendment to the draft BLA agreement. That draft was presented to us. I have not changed anything else in the BLA agreement, and that was the draft that was provided to us following the February meeting of the board supervisors. At this time, I would open it up for discussion.
My feeling, I like the addition of this, I think it's a reasonable compromise. However, I think there's, the end of that paragraph, I would stop at the word parcel, and I would strike the remaining few words.
And why is that?
I think that, you know, the town is quite able managing itself and anything related to it, and if we allow that to be in there, I think it opens the door for the county to then start dictating to us or controlling what the town does within our own boundaries. And if it doesn't occur here, if we're doing something in the other part of town, they can say, well, you included us here, so we want to be included over here. They may have no relationship at all. So I think it's better in our interest that that be stripped. We legislate and make out of ourselves.
My misgiving about that is it ties our hands a bit, that if you have, without the concurrence of the county board supervisors, there's a little bit more leeway if they think it's okay to have residential buildings at some point, and we do, still, the town is the beginning of the sentence, that maybe we want a little wiggle room here so that we can, in fact, negotiate this.
Well, if the parcel is in town, then there's no need to negotiate with the county. We have jurisdiction, it should be up to us to decide what it is. And when you say without the concurrence, it means that if we decide something on that parcel in the town, and the county says no, the county has overruled us.
So it starts with a negative, and we're not going to approve something unless the county concurs that we can't, right?
Right.
It isn't that the board of supervisors can say, we want this, and we have to go along because it says the town is not considered.
Mr. Krim, would you, would you consider this setting a precedent? I know that tailing that is, while this agreement remains in effect, is actually probably one of the strengths, but the, as far as the, without the concurrence of the county board supervisors, do you view that as setting precedent?
So, backing up a second. If you're going to include zoning provisions that are binding on both parties and on future councils, the only way to do that under state law is by getting a report from the commission on local government with a recommendation on whether that limitation should be approved, and then getting it approved through a special three-judge court that is pointed by the Supreme Court, right? And so there's a two-step process, requires notice for a lot of people, and there's, we would have to go through that process. It certainly would set a precedent with regard to this one parcel, but because it is such a lengthy and laborious process, unless we're willing to go through that lengthy and laborious process again, there's really no precedent for ordinary zoning decisions. Certainly, you would hear from board supervisors like you would in any other circumstance, but there's not any sort of situation where you're committing yourself to getting board approval.
I was just going to basically add something.
Sorry.
Something similar. I should have told you I was going to ask the question. But it's, you know, you know, I think we all, Brad and I have been chatting, we do whatever we all end up with, we just want to make sure that there's no precedent being set.
Right. I was looking briefly, yes, a few minutes ago, at an agreement that the town of Elton had with Rockingham County dealing with some zoning issues, and it looks like commission on local government will entertain those, so they go through an analysis determining whether it's in the best interest of the town, the county, and the community at large, and that's their, that's their charge, they're supposed to look at those issues.
Drew, did you have something?
I definitely agree with your concerns, Brad, with that clause at the end, but tend to agree with the, this is a snapshot of that event in the moment in time now, and I think if we aren't setting a broad precedent, then I think we can go with it and do this.
Still disagree. I, I just think that this is going to allow the county to start dictating to us whether we can have a piece of property zoned or construction of a particular facility, or building, or residential, or anything.
You know, as well as I, you know, I sympathize with the sovereignty as a town and our legal way to act, but I do, I am sympathetic to, right.
So, Mr. Krim, what about when you say, I'm responsible, what Brett said, what is the legal situation there?
So the legal situation is that.
I was assuming this was all through all of the state process, etc.
Right. Lord willing and the great God rise, as the commission on local government and three judge court approve that with the language in the agreement as it currently reads, where it's, without the concurrence of the county board supervisors while the agreement remains in effect, it doesn't, it, it does give you an out, as you point out in the city, that you could do that with the board supervisor's approval. So that does make it a little bit more flexible, but to your point, Schneider, there is, you know, you are kind of creating the idea that this is, this is normal process, and is that something that you really want to do? And then the question is, with regard to the reasonableness of this, which is what the commission on local government look at, one of the issues they're going to look at is the duration. And as currently written, it says, while this agreement remains in effect, but there's no provision for terminating the agreement, there's no duration attached to it, except that if, if the property is not developed within 15 years, then it fails, but otherwise it is indefinite duration. So it's a little bit, it's an open situation on which reasonable lines can differ, let me just set it out.
So let me ask the question, if we struck that out, then if the county wanted to exercise, I don't want to say control, but input to this, would that go to that three, three-judge panel?
Yes, sir. So if you wanted to amend this agreement in the future, that, that is something that could be done through the process.
Okay. So we could strike it now, and then in the later time, if the county came forward and said, no, we, we feel we should have, you know, discretion over this, then it would go to the three-judge panel?
And I expect that the commission on local government would have something to say about the way it's worth it either way currently or with the proposed amendment.
Yeah. I feel a little safer with it being struck and then let it know, should conditions occur, they would take it to the three-judge panel.
Is there any additional wording, Mr. Krim, that you would recommend that might?
Well, the might what? I guess, is the, what's the goal of what you're trying to accomplish there? Is it just to, is it to leave open the prospect for future changes in zoning with the concurrence of both the county and the town, or is it just to have the sunset on this entirely?
The BOSS's concern is that a year from now, we could vote to change the zoning so that they can build housing. So, in order to alleviate that concern, is this, plus being some other wording, what you would recommend that we?
So, I don't know what, what the threshold is for what the board supervisors are concerned about. I mean, the, you know, the comprehensive plan is a five-year window. Other agreements, other documents might have a longer or shorter window of time that they're looking at. If you want to assure them that it won't be next year, then, you know, a term of some reasonable number of years is appropriate. And so that's one option, is a term of years. Another option would be a term of years with carve-out for board supervisors waiver. If the board supervisors was, was willing to waive this provision, you could write the waiver in now, not have to come back and ask the commission on local government to amend it in the future. So that would be a less cumbersome process.
Wouldn't have the same effect as the language that's already in there?
Except a year.
We wouldn't be, we wouldn't be, in fact, limiting ourselves to wait 10 years, if you do it next year, if the board so chose to have a discussion with it.
Correct, right.
Just.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's, it's a, yeah, there's.
I mean, there's a lot of it.
We're trying to draft on the fly here, and I was scared, didn't I?
Well, another question, then, did you mention a 15-year window, which time?
If, if the development does not occur within 15 years under the currently written agreement, then this whole agreement terminates.
Okay. So, so again, yeah, so this is approved, the boundary line is adjusted.
Right.
Now, in 15 years, that doesn't mean that there's reason to think the boundary line will return to its original. That's permanent.
Well, so what the agreement draft before you says is that either party can petition the circuit court to revoke the boundary line adjustment otherwise authorized pursuant to Virginia law as it may then exist. So there would have to be some amendment to the Virginia law, as I understand, between now and that date for that to occur, but certainly it's something that could happen.
Okay. So if, if we took that out, then 15 years from now, this agreement expires, and we could go back and revisit.
Well, it only expires in 15 years if there's no construction.
There's already construction.
And, and, yeah, based on what I saw.
Oh, okay.
They're, they're, no, they're building.
Right, okay.
They're, they're building phase one and phase two, I expect to follow closely on his heels.
I'd like to have a little additional wording here that emphasizes that there is no precedent being set, that this is only in perpetuity for this BLA, and has no reference to any other, in whatever Mr. Krim's words are.
Well, unless you have another, unless you enter into another boundary line adjustment with, with the county, then there's not going to be a, a situation where that, this will create a precedent, because you're not going to be.
Right, there's no way it could be interpreted as being, as being an entry point for them to, other than their normal right in public to comment on zoning that's going on within the current boundaries of the town or even this, the current boundaries of the town accepting this for, like, a favorite parcel.
Right.
If we have a discussion about another boundary line adjustment at some point in the future, they could raise it and say, hey, well, you know, you agreed last time to do something to it with this.
Correct.
Potentially.
That's exactly right.
They could raise it, we wouldn't have to accept it.
Right, but of course, you know, we're talking about an agreement between the two entities, the town and the county, so.
Chances are we'll follow form.
Yeah, chances are we would, we'd take the old Elton off the shelf and say.
Dust it off and say, here, well, let's do it again.
Yeah, this is work, this is still work. And if not, you need to have a bigger lineup.
Yeah. One unreasonable view would be all about doing presidential construction, so we wouldn't necessarily come to that.
If we're going to leave it, I think it has to be framed in some way that is specific to this particular situation. Because if we don't, even if it doesn't stand out, it, it could be an opening for someone to challenge the town.
So if we put in, on this parcel, and, and only, and only this parcel?
That, that seems reasonable.
That's usable, Jane, isn't it?
Yeah.
So that the parcel, you say, and only this parcel?
Is that the last? Is that the last use of the word this parcel there, the next to last line of the paragraph?
Right.
Yeah. Legislation in action, ladies and gentlemen.
He's kind of going to go boring.
So I would amend my motion, and, and Mr. Krim, I'm going to make reference to your full description. I move to approve the draft boundary line adjustment agreement dated March 13th, 2023, substantially as presented, with the following edits, that after parcel in the next to last line, we would insert and only this parcel, and then following that, it would read without the concurrence of the county board supervisors, period, striking that while this agreement is, remains in effect, Mr. Krim, that's not necessary, that last clause is, yeah.
Yes, because if the agreement exists, it would read everything, so we can.
While this, I further move that the county staff take all steps necessary in coordination with the county staff to submit the draft agreement to the commission on local government once all appropriate edits except for have to make. Do I have a second?
I'll take it.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you all for working through that. All right, new business, update on public works. I'm going to start with a little preamble, and then I'm going to hand it off to the distinguished gentleman, Eman, to carry the water, so to speak. I did want to take a little time right at the beginning, just to say that, you know, over the last four years, after taking some time to really focus on what was going on with water and sewer works, this council has invested over $800,000 in improving the wastewater and waterworks in town, which I think is a tremendous accomplishment. We were helped down that road by the federal government to the tune of about $120,000, but otherwise, that's an enormous investment, that's more than our annual budget. So I want to thank all of you for helping us do that, particularly the, the work on the water meter. Mr. Schneider, I recommended for us, and we were able to do that, it was a $45,000 investment, but we've already seen a multi-thousand dollar return on that investment in the, in savings on water. We didn't have to process it because we were able to catch leaks early, and we also didn't pass on those really large water bills to our, our residents when we didn't realize where the leak, in between the 30 days it took somebody to walk by and take a look at their meter. As Gail can tell you, I had a very dramatic example of this in my property before we replaced the meters to the tune of, well, a lot of money. Never go away on vacation in January.
Especially if you're a treasurer.
Yeah, because she will hunt you down. You know, I, just tremendous systemic investments that will ensure that we have a long-term infrastructure needed in the town to, to do things like Rush River, to do some other investments that we hope happen in town by our various ends and businesses, and the businesses that we hope will soon come to town as we move through some, hopefully some, some ways to promote business. But tonight, I want to talk, one, to recognize the investment we've made over the last several years, to thank Brad for his partnership in doing that, but then also talk about a few, two or three of the investments that we're looking to make in the coming years as we frame that budget discussion for this weekend, and that's really to finish up some of the work on the waterworks and make sure that it can carry us forward into the next, next decade. Brad?
Thank you. Yeah, that is a big focus, is where is our water system going to be next year, five years, 10 years, 20 years down the road? As the mayor has mentioned, we've installed all these new water meters. These are actually read electronically by radio communication to a database that Barbara can look at, and it alerts her when meters are running continuously, which there'd be an indication of a leak. And at the same time, it's lightening her workload a little bit in preparing bills and getting those out the door. And I'm pretty excited because, you know, here's a little town in Virginia, and we have a water meter system that is on par with some of the larger municipalities in the United States. And there's many municipalities that don't have a system that's as sophisticated as this. So I'm pretty happy with what we've done there. I've sort of dubbed, as I've talked to Barbara, and Gail, and Joe, and others, this year is year of water. The focus is looking at our water system because it is a lifeblood. If our water system fails, business in town stops, and that's very critical to us from a financial standpoint. So the system has to be, it has to continue to maintain quality of water. So one of the things that we are being pressed to do by the state of Virginia is we need to locate another potential well site, so we're looking at that. It'll probably tap out of the San Joaquin, we, we've looked at a couple of other places, but they're just, they're not going to pan out. So we're looking at something not too far from the pump house where it sits right now, but it would be potential for drilling a new well should we need it. And, and I say, when we locate it, we actually do have to drill the well, cap it, and have it well-prepared in case our primary well fails. So that's, that's more of the task that we have. So that's more of the task that we have. The other thing is our filtration system is getting old. A lot of the fittings are corroded. You have to be very careful when you service that and work on it, because with some of these fittings, if they break, they can't be repaired. And that would take our filtration system down, and we'd have to pump basically all our, out of our well. And the EQ, Department of Health, and everything would have great issue with that. So we're looking at upgrading that to a new system. So I have to go out and get proposals and see what the numbers are going to cost to do that. And I have some ideas of how we can do it in such a way that it doesn't disrupt the existing system, and changeover can be done virtually in a day. The other portion of that is, the way the system currently operates is we pump from the well, we push through the filtration system, and then water flows down Harris Hollow into town, servicing all the accounts, and then generally at night or when water flow exceeds demand, it pumps to the water tower. That is not how a proper water system works. There was a line that went from the pump house to the water tower. It apparently had a leak, I don't know how long ago, I think it was before I came to town, and I've been here about eighteen years now. And rather than finally repair it, the decision was made, oh, just, we'll just run the water down Harris Hollow. It should be going to the tower directly. So one of the things that is a priority of mine is to get across, to engineer a new line, and then get quotes to actually install a new line. And that way, we can put the system back and not tell you the way it's supposed to be. Gary Curry and I had a brief conversation about it. He is a civil engineer, so he's very cognizant of this type of installation, and he's voiced his thoughts and comments on this, and so I kind of wrapped that into things that I want to do in preparing the new water system. The other part of that is when we do put this new line in, I'm looking at a new system to monitor the level of water in the tower. And I'm doing that for two reasons. One is, with our current meter system, I'm hoping that we can get a transmitter that will communicate from the water tower to the pump house using the same wireless network. And if we can, I want to explore whether or not we can capture information in the database so that Barbara would know this, and we could have some historical record what our water levels are. The other part of doing this properly, and I'm going to get with Sean, I can't remember his last name, he's the emergency services coordinator.
Holster.
Holster, thank you. I'm going to get with him, and we're going to discuss a little bit about the amount of water that we should maintain in the tower at all times for firefighting purposes. With the development of Rush River, we now have, going to have several residential buildings, you know, the commercial building, food pantry. So we want to talk about what is needed, or what should always be available for firefighting and public safety purposes. So that's another piece of this reexamination of the water system. And then once we get numbers, then I turn it over to my esteemed colleague to go un-money hunt. There are numerous grants and loans through US EPA and other federal agencies that we're going to see if we can't tap into. US EPA has, within their spectrum of work, a whole section oriented specifically for small communities, both in water and in sewer. And so we want to explore what opportunities they may have in terms of funding for a small community. So we're going to be working on all of that, and that's a high priority again for this year. Just briefly, on the wastewater side, our plant operates very, very well. ESS is doing a fabulous job, day in and day out, taking care of our system. We are nowhere near capacity. We're actually, I think we're under 50% capacity for that plant, so it operates quite well. As Joe said, we've made a lot of investments, because in the past year, eighteen months, we've corrected a lot of things that were done wrong, things that were not, at time of installation, some things that weren't seen and have only finally raised their head, and we have to correct for that. But overall, the plant is remaining in pretty good shape. I do have some plans for that to improve it further, which would actually increase its capacity, it's referred to as hydraulic capacity, and also lower the energy cost. And those are, and I would say both on the water side as well, we're looking at what's the cost to actually operate these facilities? So the sewer plant, or wastewater treatment plant, is the biggest power bill that we pay, I think it's about $2,500 a month. And with some of the improvements I'm looking at, I think we can significantly reduce that. Only probably urgent thing that we need to look at for the treatment plant is the control system that operates if the actual physical controls themselves are obsolete. They are no longer manufactured. We have a quote to upgrade it from the original company. I've reached out to an old colleague of mine in Michigan. They are probably the largest controls house that does control systems based on Allen Bradley Controls. So Ted and I had a brief conversation, we're going to have another conversation, because they do a lot of upgrades. They can use old systems that are no longer available and upgrade it to new technology and trying to future-proof where they can. So we want to take a look and see what Ted and his company can do as opposed to the other company. And then, you know, we'll look at numbers, we'll see what makes sense. We may want to execute that particular improvement so that, again, we ensure that the plant doesn't go down, because if we lose a control system, literally people are going to live there 24 hours a day, manually running it, which is, even for a small plant, it's a big task. So we need to have that system secure, and we have to flush the toilet, the water is processed, and it goes down the stream nice and clean, and EQ says, good job, cats. And there is, we can, I'm very happy about it. Yeah. So as I said, water system is priority for this fiscal year. Wastewater, we'll have some other things we want to do with that, probably in the next fiscal year. But we'll do all the planning now and start improving it.
Appreciate that, appreciate that rundown. Thank you again for being a good partner on working on this the last few years, and just being a good shepherd of our system.
Yeah.
Really appreciate it. Now, Brad, that's a great tee up of the fact that on Saturday, Brad and I are going to be asking the rest of you to make a $100,000 commitment to the, our new capital improvement fund, to give us a running start. So further discussion on that Saturday. I wanted to frame that conversation before we went in there and offer folks a chance to comment later, if you hang around, I'll.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
About the new pump. How dangerous is it that it goes into the same aquifer as your one? Would they both be working at the same time?
No.
Would they both take the water? So the new one would go in when the old one fails?
Right, right. Probably what we do is, yeah, we would have that new pump physically available, but not in the well.
Okay.
So we know, okay, we're failing, we have enough water in the town to carry the town for two days, plenty of time to install the new well, and do the switch over. We'd have all piping put in place and literally just open and close valves.
Any other questions? Brad, you're standing in the silence. Technicalities. Okay. I'm going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is economic development authority. As during my inaugural address, I know I threw my hat over the wall, so to speak, in challenging the council to think of new ways to advise business in town. You know, really think about how can we, you know, we've all talked about our concerns about loss of businesses and empty storefronts, so what, how can we inject some new thinking into that? Subsequent conversations with the business community, with our friends and neighbors, have helped refine that thinking a little bit. You know, and really focusing, I think, on three core topic areas. You know, I talked a little bit in my address just thinking about, you know, the lodging, and, you know, what would we apply that to encouraging our ends to invest further in property in the long term, we expect a higher return as they raise their rates. But through the various conversations, it became obviously the other two big issues were restaurants and retail, and had to think a little harder about how could we, how could we encourage the two of those? So. So after talking to with colleagues, talking to Martin a little bit about how we could get down this road, what it really turned out to be is we would have, if we wanted to do some sort of tax rebates for restaurants, if we wanted to consider grants for retail, and to see what we can do for transient lodging, that we were going to need to create an economic development authority, which would give us the ability to take appropriate funds and enable this sort of activity. So what I'm going to be asking probably in April for us to do is to move down that road. So a little bit about economic development authority, not uncommon construct across the Commonwealth, many counties do it, a little unusual for a municipality as small as us to have one. We would, if we move forward with it, the council would provide some general guidelines, things we would be interested in, many of which I think I just touched on, and then we would appoint a seven-member board to oversee that. Since we were such a small municipality, three members of this council would be on the board, our chair of our planning commission, and the chair of our executive review board would be able to sit on the board, and then we would appoint two members from the rest of the community. And then that would tee us up, and I would like, I will be coming to on Saturday, if we're going to go down that road, we'd ask that we go ahead and set aside $10,000 in this year's budget to fund that economic development authority if we decide to move forward. So I just want to go ahead and go on, and happy to entertain your questions about what we've talked about so far, or where we think we should go, before I open it up to the public.
I think this is a good start, and thank you, Martin, for all your guidance on the EDA, and, you know, you laugh at a count of 100 people needing EDA, but we do, because we want to be able to help these small businesses, and this is the best legal way to do it. Everybody knows, we use the trash or just get out of the way, it doesn't sound right. So I'm comfortable with this, with what we're talking about it more in April, and we'll chat about a little bit at the work session on Saturday if anybody has any questions about whatever, in generalities. We're in a good spot moving forward.
No, I agree, I think it's a good first step, flush out the because, that's common practice.
I'm excited about it, as a business owner myself. I think 10K is a good start, and it'll be a significant investment down the road, but hopefully it gives us taxes and increase business and help us to restrict that balance out here, keep our people of nature, but have a vibrant economy.
It would be nice if a business wants to come into town, then they may be short a little money in just building out, something as simple as that, for them to know that they have this way of getting funding. We'll make it as simple as possible, Martin.
Well, and I think too, to have an official EDA then opens up things safe for and such for going after money. And I always bring this up, they are such a huge resource, you know, going to.
County VMA.
The VMA. You know, so they should give a lot of input.
I don't want to get a lot of reading on their.
Yeah, I mean, the meetings are not attended from VMA.
That's the Virginia municipal.
Yeah, they will go up to. They are such a huge resource, both from the information they have directly, but just through the membership, if you go to a meeting, you talk to people. The last one that was at had mentioned our, you know, water meters. And I had several people, you know, how'd you do that? I mean, they're very curious, looking at the same thing.
Was it?
Yeah, it's, you know, we get into the EDA, and there can be some other people saying, yeah, well, these are our growing things, these are our issues. They'll just make what we've got to do, you know, much easier to sell.
And I think, yeah, the combination, well, I certainly hope that the combination of all the grants and some sort of tax rebate will really, hopefully, do our best to set the stage for businesses who want to come here. Make it clear, as I said in my opening remarks, that we are back open for business to include streamlining as much of our approval, other approval processes. So I know we've got that part down much to, occasionally to Steve and Martin's chagrin. But now, now it's just taking that next step, so I appreciate your support and look forward to talking. All right, and that's the last thing on our agenda. This one, I'd like to open it up to the public for any public comments.
Yeah, I would like to make a comment, but could I?
If you could, just for reporting purposes, Jim.
Yeah, sure. Jim Abdo owns some properties down the street here. I want to applaud all of you for all the work that you're doing. It's a thankless job, but I'm thanking you, I think it's great. I love how you guys are putting in the time that you are, and that you care about this community as much as you do, so thank you, we feel the same way. I think the EDA is a great idea, but as someone that has tried to bring business to this town before, while that's a great silo to have in place, one of the biggest obstacles is really your zoning. And the need for small business owners to approach coming into this town through a special use permit as opposed to a buy right opportunity to open a business is your biggest obstacle. I didn't need grants for the people that I was written to here, I didn't need assistance with money. I needed people to get out of the way and allow people to open a bakery or a small restaurant, and not be forced into a political firestorm. And if you had underlying zoning that made a clear path, where people knew that they had certainty in the process, you would see your town evolve, and you would see people come here with a level of sort of robust energy and creativity. So as you think about setting aside dollars for your economic development program, I would encourage you to think about putting aside dollars for your zoning administrator, for your attorney, other people that can help you revamp the current zoning that you have in place to make it more welcoming for business. That, in my opinion, is money better spent. Not to say that you shouldn't go for with the EDA, I think that's smart too, but I think you need to go down dual tracks in order to see things happen. Just my opinion, I've been involved in this kind of work in the other Washington and other communities for quite, for three decades. And we love going into communities that are underserved, we love being a catalyst for positive change. We don't do that through a process of displacement, we do it by bringing the community together, and that's what we tried to do here some years ago. So just to provide you with some honest feedback, that's where I would be focusing if I were all of you. And I do applaud you for all that you're doing, and you'll have our support, and we thank you.
I would just say, Jim, without bringing up any of the history, we want to leave that as history, but I think, you know, with Mr. Crim now with us, with Mr. Garrison with us, I think we have the things that you're looking for, you know. I've worked with Steve quite a bit, and spent a lot of time on Rush River with him and other issues, and he is extremely knowledgeable, and he's very familiar with small towns. He has, like yourself, he likes small towns, and he really likes Little Washington. So he's a guy who can bring a nice steady hand, that's, you know, what is reasonable with, you know, where I don't think you had that before, and I think there were just some issues that have now passed. And again, with Mr. Crim, he's.
And again, with Mr. Crim, he's very thorough, he's meticulous, but also too, he comes personally without a lot of history to the town, so he brings a fresh perspective. So between those two gentlemen, people like yourself, you know, I'm very optimistic that we can move forward with all the things that we want to do.
Well, you know, I appreciate you saying that. The only thing I want to add real quick is that we have never looked for any, any special treatment. This is not about, hey, encourage a developer to come here and do something and roll out the red carpet. That's not what we're here for whatsoever. I just want to say that, you know, allowing businesses to come in here freely with ideas under a buy right scenario, if you own the land in a commercial corridor, there should be a variety of, a variety of businesses that you can open without subjecting yourself to scrutiny from people that don't even live in this town, okay?
Agreed.
The other checks and balances that you all have in place, which is great, are these folks, okay? You've got an ARB that's excellent, and no one's talking about handcuffing them. We're talking about, this is your real gatekeeper, okay? This is going to make sure that the historic integrity of this town is maintained. But let businesses be what they are, and let the market sort of determine what's going to make the most sense here. And know that you've got a backstop here to make sure that, you know, there's not going to be final siding happening up and down the street with horrible storefronts and absurd businesses doing weird things. So I think you're in a really good place if you make the process more welcome.
Well, I think, you know, Mr. Garrison's done a lot in the zoning to try and streamline so that, because it was sort of a vague, what do I do, who do I talk to? Spent a lot of time just trying to organize that to make it easier for someone coming in, and they know, oh, these are the steps I go through.
I agree.
It just opens that door up.
We've met, we talked as recently as today.
Yeah.
And so I think he's a very sharp guy, and I think he understands, and he does have a passionate attachment to this town like we do, and all of you do, and I think good things can happen. But I really think, again, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but focusing on simplifying your zoning is going to make a big difference for you guys for years to come.
So thanks for your...
And that is on Steve Garrison's list for this year, is working with the planning commission and getting these ordinances so that there are less drunk home.
Wonderful. Well, I guess I could end my remarks where I started, which is a waste of breath as the year is behind. But I think that, you know, a decade has expired, that you've got a whole, virtually a whole new team running, leaving the town. And, you know, through all these steps that we're taking, I think we do have our absolute commitment, all businesses in town have our absolute commitment to encourage new business and to bring, you know, increasing the vitality of our community in a thoughtful perspective. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the office? Okay, with that?
We are adjourned.
We're all, we're taking a motion to adjourn. So I'll keep her around. So I'll close, I'll move, we close the public's forum. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Okay, second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And thank you, Barbara, for all your hard work here this evening.